I'm going to hold that over to next month. I haven't had a chance to review them yet. So the next item on our agenda, or first item on our agenda tonight is a performance bond reduction for Four Corners. Do we have anyone here from Four Corners? Did we expect them tonight?
No, I think they thought this was just a formality.
Okay, all right. Have we been through it with them?
Yes, yes we have.
Any questions or concerns?
No, this is just a culmination of completed work and, you know, a couple of months of just going back and forth with the numbers and the quantities. And I know Morris has looked at it along with myself. I think we're at a point now that we're comfortable with this reduction.
Okay.
It goes down below like 346, so it's got to stay.
Yeah, 20% is a minimum final number which they're holding on the performance bond. And they submitted a maintenance bond as well on the sections of road that have been dedicated before.
Any questions from board members? Do I have a motion to approve the performance bond reduction from 2.9697 million to 1.4999 million?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is an extension of the performance bond for the completion of improvements at Arthur'sburg Corners. Excuse me. Are we out? So were we expecting someone from Arthur'sburg for this one?
Apparently not.
Okay.
I think we kind of picked up on it administratively. I don't know.
Okay. What's its current expiration? I'm assuming they have to submit additional, is it an LC or an actual bond?
It's actually a cash deposit.
Cash deposit, okay.
And what happened is there was some delay in obtaining the approvals from DOT and then the weather changed so that without the extension, I believe it would expire on April 2nd. So this would just be the grant, but the $250,000 is actually on deposit with the town.
Okay. Do we need to change that amount or are we comfortable with the amount?
No, I think the amount's still appropriate. It's just the time period. We didn't want it to expire before the work.
So the current expiry, I'm just trying to read through, for the current expiration date is March 31st. Is that right?
I think it was one year from, yeah, on it before March 31st. Thank you. I was looking for that date.
Okay. Yeah, and it's on the fourth paragraph on the first page.
Right.
Okay, so Tom, are we, do we know what the recommendation or request was for the extension? Is it six months? Is it a year?
We're going one year.
One year? Okay, do we have questions or comments from planning board members? Okay. Do I have a motion to extend the date of completion for improvements on Arthur'sburg Corners from March 31, 2014 for one year to March 31, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The next item on our agenda is a final approval request for Saxon Woods, 12 lots on Old Fishkill Hook Road and Fishkill Hook Roads.
Good evening.
Hello? Have there been changes since preliminary? Anything we should go?
There's been no changes since preliminary. We were here about a month ago with the final approval request. Following that meeting, we did make changes in response to comments. We're pretty much at the point where we're following through with the administrative ends of the project as far as submitting information for the town attorney's review, the map planner report, for the town engineer for the drainage district. Just about finalized with Central Hudson on the license agreement for the driveway crossing. So we're getting very close to the end. And again, we're just dotting our i's and crossing our t's, mostly administrative. The plans themselves are fairly complete as far as the design. We do have health department approval. So that's where we stand.
I have letters. I guess, Joe, you want to start us off? Is there anything substantive that we need to talk about before we would schedule this?
No, I think, as Bill said, these are somewhat minor or administrative. I mean, there's a fairly lengthy list of things here to check off, but we feel that this letter is comprehensive and as long as I can address them and also deal with the legal items, the drainage district, the performance bond, some of those things. But most times that happens
Would just be conditional on final?
As conditional on final, right.
Okay.
Most of those were actually changes to the plans themselves, or at least a lot of them, right?
Yeah, some labeling, some notes, but it's all fairly minor corrections or adjustments. And we've been working kind of close with Bill's office on a stormwater plan. And so we feel it's, you know, they're fairly easy items to be addressed. Nothing substantial.
Okay. Michelle, anything from you? You have a couple of notes.
I just have a couple of small, minor comments, nothing substantive. Just a confirmation that there's no sign proposed for the entrance. I believe you discussed that earlier. And then just the fact that there's a large number of wetlands and wetland buffer on the site to make sure that per the conditions of approval, that all the split rail fencing, demarcating the wetlands and the wetland boundaries are installed prior to the start of construction. That's on, it's notes on the plan. He's already got those notes on the plan. I'm just reminding him.
Right, and we, that'd be with the building permit, that when the building permits on each lot, the fence is put on the line.
When the erosion control, erosion control is put in as part of the SWIP.
And then the other, the last thing is just to avoid disturbance to the Indiana Bat, which is, this is also on the plan, but I'm just reminding everybody that no tree removal on the site shall occur between April 1st and September 30th.
Scott or Brandon, anything?
I mean, well, I have met with the applicant's attorney. He's drafted all the documents. One condition will be subject to the approval of the drainage district by the town board, but that can be a condition of final. He's given me a draft of it, so that's fine. And the only other thing, at the request of the highway superintendent, we're now asking to add to the plan's note that the roads will not be accepted for dedication between October 15th and April 15th. This is because the town plans on its plowing contractors, et cetera, before October 15th. And to accept a road during the winter months doesn't make much sense to us. So we would like to, the highway superintendent asked that this would be continued now as a regular practice. So that would be a requirement of final.
That makes sense.
And I just want to clarify, Michelle brought up the sign. I don't think, I think she's referring maybe a sign that says Saxon Woods subdivision, right? Is that a permanent sign? But there will be a for sale sign or something up or?
At this point, the applicant does intend on actually building it out. So if somebody did come along that would want to actually build it out and they did need a sign, they would have to know that they'd have to come back before this board, you know, for that request. But at this point, we don't have any plan to do a sign.
Okay.
Is your intention to build the road? When you say not building it out?
The intention of the applicant right now is not to build the road out necessarily, but that still is up in the air at this point.
So you may sell the whole thing, is that what you're talking about?
That may, that may be a possibility.
All right, because there was that note pertaining to the ponds that the project engineer was going to certify the pond. But if you sell it, then you're out of the loop.
Oh, no, that condition would still be as part of the plan set. That, you know, as far as the design engineer, I would still be involved with whatever entity would pick this project up.
And then the only other question I have to prepare the final resolution is that Finger Lot, does Finger, is that going to be an easement then for the common good or to the town or how is that resolved? I know we discussed it.
Yeah, we did resolve that and we did add, what we've done on the Flag Lot is we added an easement over the driveway to provide access to the rear of the lot for the area that's designated for the town to possibly drill a well in the future if they, you know, if it's so, sees fit. We originally were proposing access from Route 52, but it, you know, the grades are pretty restrictive. So we did go ahead and add that easement. And again, we did provide that information for review.
That's one of the easements that was in the package that we had.
Yeah, Bill, he's actually talking about that Lot 1 that has that elongation strip near the entrance.
The front area.
It shows, that's part of the lot.
It's part of the drainage easement.
So you're going to include that into the drainage easement?
Yes. I'm sorry.
No, that's right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
I have a question, just general knowledge. If you sell the whole thing lock, stock and barrel, the, would the new owners would be totally still constrained by the site and approved math?
Oh, absolutely. It wouldn't matter who builds it. They have to follow the approval in the plans.
Or they would need to come back to the planning board for it?
For any, for any changes. So all I, you know, meant by that is if somebody did come along in the future and wanted to put a sign in, they would have, it's not approved. So it would have to come back before you for approval.
They're bound by.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
There was the easement for Central Hudson, which I think is closed, right?
Yeah, we're finalizing the license agreement at this point in time. We've been back and forth with them quite a bit. And that's nearing completion.
But there'll still be an easement with Central Hudson?
It's a license agreement. Just to go across for access.
Can I just ask one more question? With relation to the utilities that are going to be raised, you've had dialogue with Central Hudson on raising those?
We have not had dialogue with them.
The concern I have is if you sell this, that, you know, five years from now, that condition becomes an issue because it's laid dormant for a while. But now I'm hearing that maybe you haven't even talked to them at all. I thought you had had dialogue with them.
No, we're going to.
Because the project's kind of a nonstarter if you can't get the utilities raised.
Yeah, they, we had a very preliminary discussion with them in the beginning. And they basically wanted the final plan. Then they mentioned that it would be the applicant or whoever's building it's responsibility for the costs to raise that to a proper height. And that would be dealt with at the time, you know, prior to construction.
It's just if it sits on the market for a period of time, I'm just, you know, if you don't have, there's no commitment right now from any utility to raise these lines?
No, we.
Even if they're reimbursed, is there any kind of commitment?
There's no commitment because we were informed that it would be the project sponsor's responsibility at their cost.
But that would be through the power company. They would, they would do the work.
Right.
Yeah, we asked for it to be added to the map.
There is a note on the map showing that.
Yeah, 3B we mentioned. The plant should be noted to talk about raising the wires.
So that condition is stipulated on the plan. So if anybody comes along in the future again, they would have to abide by that.
And we'll carry that into the final resolution.
Okay. No, that's good. Other questions or comments from board members? Tom, I know we need time to draft a final resolution.
Right, it could be on your April 1st.
April 1st, okay. Do I have a motion to assign this for decision on April 1st?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good one. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a request to set public hearing for Stone Ridge Commons Site Plan on Route 52 and Round Hill Road.
Good evening. Richard O'Rourke with Keenan Bean, attorneys for the applicant. We're here this evening to set the date for public hearings. So we're hoping that will be done.
The board would recall, the last time this was on, you confirmed lead agency. And at that time, they still had to modify their plans and they have. So the next step would be to consider scheduling it for a public hearing.
Okay, I appreciate that because I know I wasn't able to be here for the last meeting. So, all right. Are there any other outstanding items or anything else that we're waiting for?
I think there's additional comment letters, but they would just be part of the.
Questions or comments from board members? Okay, we're a quiet group tonight. I'm not sure what it is. All right. Okay, so you need to send out notice for public hearing, start the public hearing. So what day is it? March 18th? So there's April 15th or May 6th?
April 15th would be fine.
I don't think that works time-wise. You need 25 days under our code.
Right, you need 25 days.
25 days?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
Posting, right? So it would be May.
Okay, May 6th.
I think May 6th, otherwise you're not going to have enough time.
That's fine. Thank you. That's rather unusual, 25 days. It really is.
It used to be shorter. I think it was changed, what, about two years ago, Tom?
Right, it's for the posting on the property. That sign has to be adjusted.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion to schedule Stone Ridge Commons for a public hearing on May 6th?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. May 6th. And you can work with the planning office to make sure you get your notices out in time and all of that.
And the sign is posted properly. Thank you very much.
Great. All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion for Hilltop Manor DEIS, 21 lots on Creek Bend Road.
Good evening. Ann Cuticola from Tim Miller Associates, where the preparers of the DEIS. We have received the recent memos from the town's technical staff. And to be honest with you, we, I have a written statement here that I'm going to read into the record.
Okay.
Our client has been.
I'm sorry, before you, do you have copies for the board as well?
I don't, but I could make those available to the board.
That would be great.
Yeah, that's fine. This client has been paying taxes to the town on his property for many years. He believes that he has the legal right to use it and subdivide it in accordance with the town code. I'm here tonight to request that the planning board adopt a notice of completion for the Hilltop Manor draft environmental impact statement. We've been in front of this board addressing the exact same issues since 2005, and that's more than eight years. We've researched the town code and have found no provision where the subdivision of this property would not comply with applicable legal requirements. There is no basis in the law for requiring this landowner to do anything different from any previous landowner in this neighborhood has been required to do with respect to access. As I'm sure you're all aware, there's two outstanding issues on this property. And it's the issue of the Carroll Drive Bridge access to the site and a secondary emergency access and/or construction access from the site. I believe it's fair to say the remaining issues have been beaten to death and asked and answered. And virtually everything else has been provided. So these are the two remaining large picture outstanding items that we've been before this board for a number of times and in a number of respects and have just provided all the information that's been asked of us and have been unable to come to a conclusion where we could get to a public hearing, which is really all we're requesting. The town commissioned an engineering study on the condition of the Carroll Drive Bridge, and that study indicates the bridge is suitable for vehicles weighing up to 22 tons. We've included that study in the DEIS and relied upon its information and accuracy for purposes of addressing the issue of access. Even though it is the town which is responsible for the maintenance of the bridge and the lack of which necessitated the requirement of the weight limit, we've agreed to, we have agreed to limit construction vehicles to a size below that required weight limit, which is a reasonable mitigation measure. Section 617.9 of the SEACER law simply requires a description of possible mitigation measures, and that has been done. SEACER does not require that every impact be mitigated, nor is it necessary to determine every detail of implementation prior to public review of the document. You can certainly consult with your attorney regarding what the law does and doesn't require. A DEIS is intended to be a disclosure document. Solving every issue in advance of being allowed a public hearing is not the role of a DEIS, nor is solving every problem the role of SEACER. The town commission study did not indicate that frequent use of the bridge was an issue. However, we've now received letters from your engineers stating that it is. It seems that you've continually added new concerns outside the scoping document. The latest concern about the frequency of truck traffic was not identified in the bridge study, or was it in any of the approximately nine memos written over the past two and a half years? We are being presented with obstacles to processing this application above and beyond anything the SEACER law anticipates. We're being asked to solve the problem as though we were at a point of getting an approval. SEACER requires the disclosure of an issue and the identification of potential mitigation measures at this stage, which we have done. Keep in mind, this is a public road and the bridge is a town bridge, which the town is obligated to maintain. We've also investigated the feasibility of alternative construction routes to the site. We laid out the road grades to cross the utility right of way and the private property directly out to Carpenter Road. This road is not feasible based on reports from the applicant's professional engineer based on the road grades and has been documented in the DEIS. We also want to address the longer term issue of a secondary means of access and the fact that it is not required by the code, yet the board seems intent on making this applicant provide a secondary means of access. We have identified the potential for a secondary emergency access to serve the entire Carroll Drive neighborhood and indicated willingness to participate in this on a fair share basis. The applicant is not in a position to provide secondary access from Hammer Drive without participation from the town to meet this overall community need. The applicant did not create the situation, and he is not in a position to solve it on his own. But he has offered to participate in the overall solution by providing an easement across his property and participating in the other measures to benefit the Carroll Drive neighborhood. SEACER requires the disclosure of environmental issues and the presentation of potential mitigation measures, and that has been done. The information to allow the planning board to take a hard look has been provided. The document acknowledges the access situation accurately. It therefore complies with the scoping outline adopted by the town and complies with SEACER. It is not lawful to continue to require the applicant to solve matters beyond his control in the draft EIS. Please advise us with specific citations where we do not comply with SEACER regarding DEIS completeness. I'm here tonight, as I said, to request that the planning board adopt a notice of completion. We are simply looking for a public hearing and to move this process forward. We are completely willing to continue to investigate the pluses and minuses and the accommodations that could be made to solve the access issue. And we feel we have presented all of the information necessary to do that in the DEIS as it stands. Please tell me where we have not complied with what's in the adopted scope and where we have not met our legal obligations such that the planning board would be in a position to conduct a public hearing. I'm all ears.
And so are we. Madam Chair Lady, may I?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, the project has been before the board for quite some time. However, there have been tremendous gaps of time when the applicant has been away preparing documents, et cetera, and this is a recent resubmission. The point to the matter being on this evening's agenda was for the planning board members to have reviewed the consultant's review of this most recent draft to make a determination as to whether or not they accept those comments to have you revise your document. There are many other matters set forth in the consultant's reports other than the road issue. Your statement prepared by counsel certainly dwells on the road issue, which I think has been vetted in many different ways and probably will be open for further discussion at the public hearing. However, there is some indication from our planner that information from the police agencies, et cetera, has not been updated and completed. There's an issue here, I'm just briefly looking at it, about some stormwater basin that hasn't been addressed as to its location. There's habitat issues that haven't been addressed that's been raised by the town planner. So I do think that those are certainly still outstanding issues. I would point out, just for the public understanding of the process and maybe for members of the board who weren't here over the years, that the application was submitted, the board established lead agency, a scope was adopted, and the applicant's been out working on drafting the environmental impact study. And as I said, have been back sporadically over the years. And certainly, this board has reacted every time something's been submitted. There has been a tremendous amount of discussion about the bridge and the road. And I think that's been laid out in the DEIS now. And it certainly doesn't mean that that's the solution, but it certainly means that probably there's sufficient information to have a hearty discussion. So now what the planning board has to do is to decide if the consultant's comments should still be addressed. If they should be, then the applicant will address them. The document comes back to you once you determine it's complete. And complete doesn't mean it's correct or you agree with its contents, et cetera. It just means that there's sufficient information to conduct a public hearing. And then the public hearing be scheduled. Any comments received at the public hearing would have to further be addressed by the applicant. So from that point of view, I, my reading of just the planner's report indicates there's a few minor issues still to be addressed. I think that there's been an extensive discussion about the bridge. And for pro or con, I do think some of the issues about the construction equipment going over the bridge is certainly worthy of discussion, but.
I, I would like, the planner's comments, I actually had some knowledge of in advance. I have, I submitted a revised rendering and the fire letter. If those were the only open issues, we would not be having this conversation. The, for example, the discussion of how to distribute the weight over a 22-ton vehicle, I feel that's a very good example of an issue that may require further vetting as the process moves forward. But I don't know that that's in between where we are and receiving permission to have a public hearing. I think that that's certainly, you know, by the time, but the rate we're going, by the time we get done, the vehicles could be completely different. I believe the bridge study recommends concrete abutments for that bridge. That may or may not happen at a convenient timeframe, and we're willing to evaluate the situation as though that has not yet happened. But given the length of time that things have moved forward, it's highly possible that that concrete could be in place before, before it would be necessary. So I am looking to move this process forward with the information relative to the bridge and secondary access being pretty much what it is as submitted.
As I recall, the last time someone was here presenting for this, we talked about the secondary access. And I remember asking the gentleman, whose name I do not remember.
Tim Miller.
Could it be done? And he said, yes. And I said, will it be done? And he said, no, because the cost is prohibitive. The secondary access.
But I like, before we get into any.
I'm sorry.
I think the only issue before, before the board tonight is whether or not the document presents enough information to have that kind of a discussion at the public hearing. I don't think, we're not going to get a solution or an accepted solution or a rejection of a solution prior to going through the public discussion.
It was just interesting that when that gentleman was here presenting, that was prior to this information being supplied, and yet we had the discussion. It seems to me the discussion came first by the presenter, not by the planning board bringing it up.
No, the, to be fair, the planning board has asked the same question in a variety of correspondence over an extended period of time. The issue is not new.
Right.
What was new, that was presented, it was almost a year ago that we were here, what was new at that time is that we actually laid out the road grades to see. was new at that time is that we actually laid out the road grades to see if there was any feasibility there. Anything can be done, given an infinite amount of money and whatever, but the road grade would have to be more than 12 percent, the rock cuts would be in excess of 30 or 40 feet. So at some point, although from an engineering, could it be done? Could it be done? Yeah, you know, we could get to the moon too.
Would you even consider doing it?
But it's just not, it is not practically feasible. But we were willing to supply enough information to the planning board that you didn't simply have to accept the applicant say-so on that. You could have your engineer look at the information that was provided and assist the planning board in coming to that conclusion on their own. So that was my, our job, was to provide the information so that you can make a reasoned determination.
The second issue I remember discussing with the gentleman was about the bridge.
Correct.
And we talk about its load capacity, but we don't know what its load capacity is going to, how much it's going to be influenced by having heavy construction vehicles go over it many times a day. We just don't know. That was what I remember getting from him, is he, I don't know.
Well, the most recent hiatus was, we waited until the bridge study was completed. That bridge study was not available in April of last year, and it has since been completed.
Do you notice I'm bringing this up is because that discussion occurred before today's meeting?
Correct.
Right. And I don't think, I want to make a distinction between a determination of completeness and a determination of sufficiency or adequacy with regard to the actual plan itself or the proposal itself, right? So if we think there's enough information to make a determination, that's a little bit different than whether the information makes the plan feasible.
Okay.
I have a question.
I wouldn't agree with that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Tom, do you disagree with that?
No.
Okay.
I thought the rock cuts out for the emergency access were pretty much in line with the proposed front access from going off the road.
They are not. I don't want to answer too quickly, and I can take a look at that, but I'm pretty sure that they are not, and they're, based on the path that would be required to be taken, they don't have the, I believe that the road coming in has a much more of a switchback capability. The other issue is that the land that we're talking about where that road goes is private property and not part of this application. But, I mean, it's that same land that the applicant has offered, there is discussion of an alternative access out Hammer Drive, and that's the one where there would have to be some participation by the town, but in order to make even that secondary access feasible, the applicant would have to provide an easement over a portion of his property, but that easement would not render the remainder of his property nonusable, whereas in order to get a feasible emergency access out to Carpenter Road, it would render that property, you know, that's all it would do.
You used the phrase that he is not in a position to close this issue on his own.
Yes.
Without substantial changes. He is, but just not...
Well, that does get, it's a very big question and one we're not going to decide tonight, but the very large issue is whose responsibility is providing a secondary access for the Carroll Drive neighborhood? Is it just the ECFM applicant, or is it the town at large, given the 80 houses that are up there? You know, so...
And I would...
And I do feel, this is the one point I do want to be, that we all come away with the same thing so that we at least agree to disagree on that. I feel it's our job to provide enough information for you to discuss that, and that's all I'm looking for, is your acknowledgement that there is not information missing so that we can't discuss that. I'm just looking to get to public hearing. This will be a long, healthy, you know, discussion, and I acknowledge that.
Someone's making a warning, bridges.
A what?
The engineering letter makes reference to a Bailey Bridge.
Bailey.
It's something, it's like something you might see that the military might use, kind of a temporary bridge.
It's a temporary bridge.
That you put up or...
It's been used on 82.
82 to stay put in a Bailey Bridge instead of replacing the bridge.
Actually, a Maybee Bridge, but same thing.
Okay. It's on two.
And that would be a temporary measure, is that?
Right. Something that would carry the load of construction.
That might be a construction measure, that's correct.
Be during the construction phase primarily.
So I'd like to set aside the issue of secondary access. I think that you have comments here from several of our professionals asking you to make some, I'll call them minor changes to the way the information is presented, but there are definitely, and Tom, you mentioned this a moment ago, there's definitely other comments here where we've provided comments over the years, and most recently, May 5th of 2013, that have not yet been addressed. So I have, I guess I want to make sure that you are aware of these and that you know that we need some additional information, and it has nothing to do with the secondary access. So I'm seeing, we don't have information yet from updated police and fire letters. We don't have, and I'm just kind of briefly reading through here, we don't have the historic preservation update yet and a few other things.
Okay, so I, just to be clear, when we had our pre-meeting, I actually called Ann and gave her a heads-up about some of the comments that were still outstanding.
Okay.
She did provide me with some additional via email, okay? And so there are a couple of these comments that have now been, well, she's submitted information, and I was going to talk...
To the planning office or just to you? Because I want to just make sure that our record stays the same as...
Right, we, to be, we, Michelle and I did have a preliminary discussion, and I was under the impression that we were going to get memos, and I was, and we, for whatever reason, did not actually receive those memos until yesterday.
And the reason for that was because we were, because we were going to discuss the comments that we had remaining in these letters with the planning board to make sure that they were, and I was also going to, at this meeting, bring up what you had submitted to me and say, I've received these and I'm going to submit them now into the planning office as a...
And that's fine.
So that was all going to happen tonight.
And that's fine, I mean, we, you know...
So then, why don't we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay. I, because of the very big issue, I'm happy to continue the process and submit, make an actual submission to the planning office so that there's documentation of what the remaining minor items that are to be submitted.
Okay. So...
And I think the professional staff would be satisfied with that. I think we feel that...
I would agree. That's why I just, can we just walk through quickly, if you guys want to give us the highlights? Brendan, if you want to start?
Excuse me?
Sure.
So we have your memo in front of us. It looks like there's a couple, a couple of things that you want clarified or explained with regard to the bridge study.
Right, I think some of the information they pulled out of the town board meeting wasn't necessarily accurately reflected in the document. So, you know, I think my comment basically says that either the minutes or the resolution from that meeting should be reviewed and some of that stuff should be clarified a little bit.
Okay.
Another comment is that they did acknowledge that the bridge study imposed a load restriction on the bridge of 22 tons, and they indicated that the mitigation would be, that the project would be completed with equipment weighing less than 22 tons. And I just questioned, you know, or needed some verification of that because, you know, the standard construction practices wouldn't lend you to being able to have vehicles and loaded dump trucks, loaded concrete trucks, loaded supply trucks, loaded equipment delivery trucks.
And if there's blasting to remove rock or whatever.
That would lay, you know, I mean, you know, the standard highway load or the legal limit is 40 tons. Loaded dump trucks, concrete trucks, equipment delivery trucks, they approach that legal limit of 40 tons. So to say that they're going to be less, I just thought there needed to be something more there, like in terms of what type of equipment or how it's actually going to be policed, because the way it stands now is that nothing weighing greater than 22 tons is legally permitted to cross that structure.
And I think there was a whole thing about load, I'm sorry, was load factor in that, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, the load posting is a load posting. You know, when, sometimes if someone was going to get a, like an access permit to bring a vehicle in, they could do an individual study on that particular type of vehicle to make sure it was safe to cross, you know, a structure if it exceeded the load capability of that structure. But, you know, in this case, the bridge has a 22-ton load restriction. In theory, anything weighing greater than that, I mean, and most, some of the stuff, you know, if it was a tractor-trailer, the loads might be distributed a little bit differently than if it was a 10-wheel dump truck. But, you know, both of those, certainly a 10-wheel dump truck filled with almost any kind of material is going to exceed 22 tons.
Okay.
So, you know, that was the nature of the second comment.
But what you're really getting at is if it is feasible to provide a better explanation of how that will be feasible or how the project would be built to...
Right. I just think just stating that it's going to be accomplished with equipment weighing less than 22 tons isn't necessarily reasonable. And if, you know, if they believe that can occur, then they should give a little bit more detail as to actually how it can occur, not, you know, I think, I don't think just the statement is sufficient.
Okay.
And we would request that that is an item that would be part of the substantive review as we move forward. I'm not, I'm not adverse to trying to prove that, but I, if we say it, then we either have to do it or find some way around it, and I would like that to be part of the substantive comment that's made inside the public process for two reasons. One, I would like everything that we put forth to be documented as part of the SEACER discussion, and that is one of the other reasons why I feel very strongly about trying to get to public hearing, because what we're doing now is back and forth in a preparation type mode. I'm perfectly willing to have this exact comment be part of the public record and then for our response, to also be part of the public record. So I'm not trying to get out of answering it, but I am looking to move to the next step without answering that.
We're going to keep, we'll keep going then.
Okay.
All right, the next comment was with regard to the emergency access, there's been a lot of discussion about the evaluation of the feasibility of emergency or alternative access to the site, but there's been also some discussion on whether that emergency alternative access is actually, you know, warranted or required, but that, you know, I don't find that in the draft EIS. There's no discussion on, you know, whether it's warranted or not. It just basically evaluates some options of providing the access and it states that they're infestable, but it doesn't actually evaluate the actual warrant, no, the actual warrant of needing emergency or secondary access or not.
Okay.
Understand that. Section F, which is the vehicle and vehicle traffic and roadway section, there isn't, there isn't a lot of, there isn't discussion at all about the emergency or secondary access. There's discussion in the executive summary, but it's left out of that vehicle and roadway section.
That is actually true, because it was kind of an evolutionary discussion. It is all in the executive summary, and I'd be happy to include that in other places in the document. I have no problem with that.
The fifth comment just again relates to some...
Seems like more housekeeping, just to...
Yeah.
I believe I did this. I have to make sure, did I, I know we made one attempt at this, and if we missed it again, then I'll have to take responsibility for that.
Yeah, I think it indicates that the current, it indicates that there's updated data, but it didn't present the data. And then, again, in section F3, the mitigation measures, there's, I mean, you know, it discusses the mitigation of the load restriction on the bridge in the executive summary. Again, it doesn't discuss the emergency access, but those, you know, those proposed mitigation measures for the vehicle, traffic and roadways, you know, I think should be included in that, in that section of the mitigation measures also.
Okay. Thank you.
That was it on my end.
Okay. Michelle, you want to take us through?
Sure.
Okay. It looks like a lot of these have been addressed.
Yes, and actually, I have gotten additional information, including a revision of the photo renderings or the visual renderings that she had done. I asked just that the existing condition and the proposed condition be shown on the same page so you could do a side-by-side comparison, and that was submitted to me after the comment.
Okay. So again, I'm conscious that the planning office needs to have this in our record.
Yeah, I forwarded that, I did forward that one to Pam.
Okay.
And then the other is additional information on fire emergency services. Ann indicated to me that she would include that information in the appendices, and she has done that, and it just hasn't been resubmitted that way, but she has included that in. And then...
Okay, so can we, I'm sorry, so comment one was addressed, comment two talks again about Carroll Drive Bridge.
Yeah, that...
And I think you gave just some very specific things you wanted to see updated here.
Well, yeah, there was some updated discussion in the new version, and I just wanted to make sure, there was just, that she read through the minutes from the town board meeting, which I provided to her.
Okay.
And that she just kind of updated the discussion to make sure it accurately reflected exactly what those minutes said.
Okay.
And I believe that's similar to a comment that sounded like Brendan had a similar comment. And then I did note that in this revised DEIS, she did update the police chief information, so she did do what was requested in the original copy, but then I had another comment, which sometimes is the case, once you get additional information, you end up having another comment.
Sure.
I think this comment here could be a substantive comment. It just, there's a number in here that says that one quarter of a police officer would equate to an expense of just over $10,000, and I just, dollars, and I just wanted to know where that $10,000 figure came from. So that could be a substantive comment that she could address in the next review. And I will indicate that in the letter. I can update my letter to indicate that.
Okay.
So as I, six and seven, now that information is, she has indicated that it's in the appendices now, so I think those two can be handled. The rendering eight was handled.
I'm sorry, six and seven, those are in the planning office now?
No, she hasn't resubmitted yet.
Okay.
But she's indicated that it's in the appendices now that she's updated. And then comment eight, the rendering, she did provide a rendering of a subdivision in East Fishville that is similar in appearance to what theirs would look like. So it's up to the planning board to let me know whether or not that that is sufficient for, to address this scope comment. I believe it's Emory Ridge, is that correct?
Eagle?
Eagles Ridge, Eagle Ridge. Okay.
I'm sorry, but it's a, but it's a rendering. Shouldn't we use a photograph from the current...
Well, the actual scope says, the scope item is a little bit vague, and it just says that the applicant must include site components, including stormwater management facilities, et cetera, and fencing and landscaping of such facilities, and the analysis of potential impacts. So they do discuss it. They talk about it, and then they, and what she does is she shows a picture that shows the stormwater basin and says it would be similar in appearance to this, and discusses what it would look like from, so that's not really a rendering.
Well, there's actually, there's both, though. There's an existing, there's a picture of the existing Carroll Drive, then there's a rendering of what it will look like, and then there's a photo of a similar configuration of road. So there's both. There's the rendering and the photo, and I put them on the same page.
And the rendering that you did with the, is the dip down supposed to be the stormwater basin?
Yes.
Okay. So you can, I'll, you'll, you can see the...
Okay.
And then...
So I guess, Michelle, just to be clear, that that sounds like something that if we weren't happy with the picture itself, that would be something that could be resubmitted or...
Absolutely, or you can have additional comments saying, please provide this as a substantive comment. Absolutely, yes. And then, so that takes care of the comment nine and eight. And then I haven't seen enough of the letter from OPRHP yet. Have you gotten anything?
I have spoken to her. I did resubmit a current letter.
Okay.
And she's working on it. They have a 30-day review. I hope by the time we're done here, I'm sure we'll have it.
Okay, so that...
I've talked to her a number of times.
That can be also, I mean, it's, there was an old letter, but it was from 2002, I believe.
Right.
So I just asked that they update that because, of course, like anything else, there's new rules and regulations that come in place between the time periods, so I just wanted to make sure that whatever. But the first letter indicated that, I believe there was no concerns.
Correct.
So I'm expecting that that would be what the letter says, but nonetheless, it should be updated for the SEACER record. And then she, you indicated to me also that you included the steep slopes, need for the steep slopes permit in the permit and approval section, which is required as part of the executive summary in a SEACER document. But again, that, she'll probably provide those pages to us. I think she was waiting for the rest of the letters before she started submitting... I think she was waiting for the rest of the letters before she started submitting stuff to the, to the town. And then the rest of the comments, I put them under the subdivision plan comments because they were more substantive in nature and could happen after the completeness review, and that was the, sort of the indication that those were more substantive in nature.
Okay. And the habitats?
The habitats, they do, she does discuss the habitats. This is specifically, this comment was put in as a result of our new application that asks that they discuss the significant habitats of, of the town of East Fishville, and, and how the proposed project would result in disturbance to each of those habitat types. And I, I also think that could be done as a part of the substantive comment, because they do address the habitat quite specifically, they just don't address it in regards to that particular document. So that could be done as a substantive comment, because it was not in the scope, technically.
Okay. So, Michelle, aside from the historic preservation letter, what, what else is something that you need?
They just need to update the pages three, three, and three, four, and the project description referring to the town board discussion.
The Carroll Bridge.
And the Carroll Bridge, I would say, just provide, prove that all the emergency services letters are in the DEIS, so we have the correspondence between the applicant and our emergency service providers. You know, just a confirmation that the rendering works for everybody, and everybody has the information they need from the rendering, and I think at this point, I would say that it would be my recommendation that we say that the rendering is sufficient, and that we can ask any additional questions we have during the substantive review. And then, the letter from OPRHP, which also should be in the secret record.
Okay. So there's a couple items here that you need.
I, I, I'm in the best situation with the comments that Michelle made. My remaining task is to make an official submission to the town, and I will do that.
Okay. Okay. Let's just have Joe. Joe, is there anything in your letter that's opposed to completeness and we need prior to being able to look at a public hearing?
We, we did put forth some comments, and we know it's, it's a little bit of a fine line distinguishing what's necessary to be in the document for completeness, but we were erring on the side of caution to ask for these items, and we have had some little bit of discussion with Anne's office as well, just to give her some, somewhat of a heads-up as what we were looking at here. It basically goes back to the capacity of the bridge.
So you know it's on the bridge again, right?
The weight limits.
Okay.
Similar stuff that, you know, we've already discussed. The secondary access, and I hadn't realized until I spoke with Anne that she had even contacted the other owner by phone, at least, and tried to spur that discussion along with them as far as getting the access towards Hammer Drive. So if she has any other documentation of where she's made contact with that resident, I think that would be helpful to include in the record.
Okay. All right. So it seems like there are a few additional things that we need you to submit. Sounds like you have most of them, maybe with the exception of the historic preservation letter. Do you have a sense of when that's going to be in hand?
I, where are we? It depends, if they really take 30 days or not. She was very optimistic when I first spoke to her, and then I called her back a week later, and she said, well, you know, we, she, she had passed it along, and they do have a 30-day clock, so I will do what I can to follow up with her. And the next submission would be, to be on your next agenda would be, what, the end of?
It's April 1st.
April 1st is the next agenda, or April 15th after that?
And the submission for the April 1st is what, yesterday?
So it'd be April 15th.
And the submission for that would have to be by the end of the month, the Thursday at noon? Well, you're Friday at noon, but I'm, I just, I turned that into Thursday afternoon. That works for me. All right, as long as we can...
I want to encourage, I mean, there are comments here that specifically say there's, there's minutes from a meeting that should be included and things like that, so, or...
Let me clarify that. Michelle, you want the minutes from the meeting, or you want the text revised consistent with those minutes, which I've already done?
Okay.
I haven't submitted it yet, but I have already done.
Okay.
So that's, I have the minutes, and that's already taken care of. So the only, from my question is, Ms. Jo Dennis's comments and about the trucks and the axles and whatnot, I am requesting that those comments be remade as substantive comments at a later date. And if that's okay, then I think we'll get there.
And I think, you know, it's important, eventually we have to get that information, and we have to understand that better, but I'm, I'm okay with what you're suggesting as far as a completeness and looking at the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Those, those items, when you come back, we can just run through them as a checklist, as long as we've got everything, and you've made the submission on time, then it seems like you're, you're closed.
Well, if we, if we make the submission on time, is it possible that your technical staff, does that give them an opportunity to review it such that when we get here, they've already acknowledged that they have what they need?
If you have it in by the end of the month, I think we're, we're in good shape as far as the substance of what you're submitting. I don't think it's so voluminous that we need more than that, those couple of weeks.
Right.
I'm looking at you guys, I see nodding heads over here, so I'm comfortable saying that with the nodding heads.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That's the end of our agenda for tonight.
Could I ask a question before?
Sure.
Tom, I know on other projects like Arthur'sburg, we've always discussed mitigation before public hearings.
Well, but this is, Arthur'sburg didn't go through a public hearing on a DEIS.
Okay.
So what happens now is if, if at the April 15th meeting you deem it to be complete, it'll be scheduled for a public hearing on the draft environmental impact study. The public's free to make comments, and it's, it's kind of that they, any questions that are raised at that public hearing must then be addressed by the applicant in the final environmental impact study, and that's where mitigation in that process.
Okay. And that, there will be another public hearing after that, when they're on the plan?
Well, there's going to be a subdivision public hearing is going to continue to...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion for the evening? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not asking for opposed, because we're adjourned. Thank you.
I object.